To pick up my recycling. And it's unfair to those that are doing this that have to pay for something that's not even right. I understand we are not the only city that's having this problem. I did call one of the news stations and found out that the North Kansas City is having a problem with waste management also. California, people that I know out there had problems with waste management. I have relatives in Florida, they have problems with waste management, picking up trash or recycling. But my husband and I both are disabled. We have arthritis and other things. I'm 71 and I'm 68. And for us to go to all this trouble to take those canisters out there and put them on the road, they're not out on the highway. We've never had to put our trash out on the highway. It's out at our driveway, which is, I guess they call it Hunter Lynn Street. Because we ride across the street, basically, at the corner from Lake of Horse. And they have to come about maybe 30, 40 feet to pick up the trash. The trash guy's been wonderful done. But recycling is really being ridiculous. And I have to take my time to call in, which most of you don't like to be in, or rightly on, I don't like to be on. I did it for 13 years at a tree company. I'm out of the customer service division. So my complaint is that either it needs to be looked into by Waste Management, or you guys pay Waste Management for them not doing their job. And I don't think it's right for the city to pay them for a slotting job.
Thank you, and thank you very much. We, management will look into that. Thank you. Are there any others?
Mayor, if I can before you, because I don't know, even when we'll stay to the end, just make just a quick, just one little quick comment to each, and it'll be really quickly. Sir, I appreciate what you said tonight. I don't know if you're staying for the whole meeting, so I don't want you to go and then not hear from me. We are currently taking applications for new residents. There are a lot of applications to move to our fine city.
If I move, I'll be here.
But I appreciate it, and these are the services, so thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the recommendation from the Planning Commission regarding the preliminary plat and preliminary plan for 10648 Call Drive.
Well, as you can see, Dave is not with us tonight. He is out of town this week, and so once again, we are stuck with the presentation on painting and zoning items. Leave Zach is passing out some information now, just additional information for you. Though you have before you two items tonight, one is preliminary plat, and the second item is preliminary plans for 10648 Call Drive. This application is filed back on August 6th, 2018. It effectively is intended to divide the property into two lots, and the future proposed use is for a special event center on that lot. There's an existing house in the lot that's intended to be renovated and used as part of a project and some future expansions. It is properly zoned as C3. That rezoning happened some time ago, so that allows the use as a special event center by rights, as well as they talked about some onsite type of housing use, so if rights and rooms and parents are there, there's some overnight accommodations, so it's not part of this initial proposal. Well, the Painting Commission did hold a public hearing on this item on September 19th, and they do recommend, and we support the recommendations, for the approval of the preliminary plan, or excuse me, the preliminary plat with three conditions, and the preliminary plan with four conditions. In the package that you have on the second page of the staff report, you will see the three preliminary plat recommendations are basically accessing the public access to the property. There's a driveway next to it, so just some coordination with the KOD businesses on K32, so they have some regulatory control over the driveway. We think that would be easy to, hopefully easy to resolve. Typical, I haven't cleaned up any type of graphical errors, and that's basically that there'll still be a final plat and final plan that'll come forth in the future. As you know, sometimes we do these all concurrently. This process, just because of how it's fallen out, we want to get through the preliminary plat and preliminary plan phase with the applicant, to make sure we can get through those and then move on to the final plat. On the preliminary plan, you have four conditions. The first condition is probably the one that's the largest of the four conditions, as on page three of the staff report. Basically, the items here revolve around the look and feel of the building. They obviously want to have a kind of a barn-style look to the building as part of this event center. They're still working out who they're going to use in some of those details. We think it's a good process, but our code currently requires a 50% masonry on a type of building like this, so there may very well be a special exception on the final plan, but so we still noted here. And the second issue is just how we're going to deal with wastewater, and I'll tell you, that's not a resolved item. Right now, they're showing the use of a septic system of some type, but we're still working on what those details might be. Obviously, a large facility or facility that could have, you know, a couple hundred people in it, it's not about the average flow, it's not about peak time. So they're still working, which is again part of the reason we didn't go straight to the final plan. Most of the other items are fairly straightforward, normal comments that we make. So tonight, you have two items. One would be to consider the preliminary plat, and the second item would be the preliminary plan. We do have the applicant here with their engineers, so we're going to ask questions.
What's the alternative to a subject?
Well, there's potentially a sewer being brought across the road from the south to the north. We have talked about the option of a special benefit district. There's potentially at least one other property owner that has interest in that. There's also some onsite sewer-type systems where it works similar to the way you would run a wastewater plant, but they're for single uses. And so we're looking at all of some, it may be a situation where it's somewhat a temporary that moves till permanent, and that's really the question, you know, how much money do you put in to say a septic system versus what would the cost be to bring the sewer across the road?
There's not anything there now.
There's nothing on that north side of the road now. So as you know, it's approximately across the street from where Jackson's Automotive is at, there is a lift station there, and of course, the sewer goes further to the west, where the Plaza West, Plaza West 2 are at. So there's opportunities to get it across the road. Obviously, the biggest expense is getting, I say across, the biggest expense is under the road. So it's the boring of the road is really the big expense. Most of the rest of it would probably not be that expensive. Obviously, you have to do some easements across there. Again, it's doable, it's a matter of cost, and that's not resolved, but the preliminary plan doesn't require that to be resolved.
So two motions, they're correct.
Yes, one for the preliminary plat, and the second one for the preliminary plan. I don't know that, do you have any items you need to add at this point?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll just kind of supplement.
Okay, I'll let the applicant make a little quick comment, so if she'd like to make introductions.
Hi, Kate, from engineering and environmental, and yeah, just to supplement what Michael was introducing. So what we'll probably do is an aerobic wastewater onsite treatment system. And so basically, that's kind of your traditional septic, but without the lateral field, it's all kind of a containing like tank system with multiple components or compartments that be the treatment. Typically, you don't go with those initially because they're more expensive than the anaerobic, more typical lateral field set that you see, but it's kind of a, sort of a compromise between the limited space in this particular area they're trying to develop, and also the soil's pre-sandy, not so much ideal for lateral fields. So anyway, leaning towards the anaerobic onsite treatment system. But then, yeah, also just to comment on the layout that we have for the preliminary site plan, some ex-porous excavation was done, and we did find that there was a lot of sandy soil, a lot of dissolved limestone, that kind of limited some of the spacing. So ideally, it's going to have things a little bit more spread out, but you can kind of see there a little bit of post stamp on that southeast corner. So that's kind of what precluded, or what led to that particularly out. But with that, the owners are here as well, so I'm taking any questions or comments that you would like to address.
Do you understand that we're looking at there's going to be a supposed new entrance off of 32?
There is an existing driveway onto the property, and right next to it, there's another residential driveway. So it's just coordinating that, but it will have to be brought up through a commercial driveway standard, and we've already had those discussions with KOD. So right now, it's just a residential drive. It will be fundamentally in the same location, but will require some widening. Obviously, the driveway itself will have to be improved. It'll be, I don't know if it's concrete or asphalt driveway, but it'll be our standards and up to the parking area.
Because on page C4, it shows, the drawing shows more like a typical septic system.
Correct.
Shows the leach field and tank, and that's not, it's not what.
When that was, obviously, that's part of the preliminary proposal that was brought forth in interior discussions, the idea of using an aerobic system, which I personally had experience with those. I mean, they work well, they take more maintenance by the property owner, but they are, they can be a very functional user.
And it handles the peak numbers, like what you're saying, varying in event, I mean, that's capability, capacity to.
They'll have to size it, I mean, that'll be part of the final plan. We haven't evaluated how big, what size, obviously, they're engineers, they work on that.
Yeah, because I think, I would see where it'd be tough to protest down in the same, you know, for a while, and it won't say it's great.
I think part of the issue, I think the owner and us as well, you know, septic systems have their limitations. They certainly don't want a system that's going to be adjacent to their building and then has a problem with it, or you have septic rising to the surface, and you have, you know, 200 party guests there for a beautiful wedding and have to step outside. So I, I think we're all in agreement that we want to find the best solution that works for those parties.
What's the max occupancy for the building?
200, yeah, that's right. 200 people is what I suppose.
So you feel like 80 or 80 spots would be plenty for that?
I believe it meets, it meets our parking standards, yes. I think it exceeds our parking standards.
Could you repeat the conditions?
So on the preliminary plat, which is the first item, the first condition is addressing the public access to the site and making sure it works with the two driveways that are there currently, because they're right next to each other. Any type of graphical items, which is pretty standard, and that there'll be a final plat, and obviously, that will have to meet all the requirements that we have with final flats, including the county survey, which comments that have come in. Those last two are fairly standard comments on flats.
This does not bind us into any sanitary, particular sanitary?
It does not.
Is there a condition for that septic to be figured out before?
Well, as part of the preliminary plan, that is one of the comments on the preliminary plan, as well as whatever they propose will go through engineering review on our side, so our department engineering will determine in fact, yes, it can handle peak flows, right? I mean, sewer's always dealing with peak flows. I mean, it's not the one or twos, we have 200 people in the building that you really have to plan, whether that's a sanitary sewer system or any other type of sewer system. But those will be addressed in the final plans.
So I know sewers, but I'm not understanding what that sewer system is, the tank that they're going to have to pump out once in a while, or what is it?
No, the way in aerobic, if you want, but I mean, way in aerobic, yeah, aerobic system, aerobic system is similar to, so think about septic being anaerobic, in other words, it has no air, that's what it means by anaerobic. So it, the digestion of the solids happens without air. In an aerobic system, there's also tanks, but there's air put into the, into the tank, so it's aerobic. And there is typically a chlorinator tied to the system, so that adds chlorine to it. And then the discharge is typically through a sprinkler type of system. So you irrigate areas that aren't, you know, directly in public contact, and the way it works basically, when you have chlorine in water and it's released to the air, it creates beneficial ozone, basically the way it works. You could probably get into more general engineering on that, but I mean, but it's just another form of system. You don't, I'll be honest with you, you don't see them as much here in this part of the country, but we had events where we were having snow on the ground for months and months and months at a time, you probably would not look at using one of these systems up there. They're used in different climates, and they function well. They require maintenance, that's, that's their purpose. They require maintenance by the property.
It's fairly common on the west coast, isn't it?
I believe so. I know we have them, you know, in the southern part of the U.S. I mean, I would say they're probably more prone in areas where you don't have heavy snowfalls than, you know, I don't know if you'd use it in Montana or someplace like that, but they may use them as well. I think they're still, and I can speak to that, I think they're still getting information on the sizing and the systems and et cetera to present as the option. Again, I think our preference, obviously, is always to have a sanitary sewer system. And the question again is, who pays for that? And quite honestly, for a single user, you know, if you're just going to have this one user, the cost would be pretty costly, or it'd be to expect the developer, you know, this property owner, to bear the whole cost. If there are ways to share that cost, then it may be worthwhile doing, creating a special benefit vision around sewer, but first we have to make sure, there's not a lot of property there today that is in need of sewer.
You said you have another property owner that is interested?
There is another nearby property owner that's expressed interest in having sewer available there, basically for future development. But again, that's, that's been a very brief, you know.
That's east, directly east?
It would be to the east, yes.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we adopt the preliminary plat. Do you want me to go through all the numbers and everything?
With that, with the, with the conditions, that have been recommended by the staff?
Any address?
On 10648 Call Drive.
Second. It has been moved in second to approve the Planning Commission's recommendations for preliminary plat with conditions set on 10648 Call Drive, where the clerk please call over.
Stikes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kaymar?
Yes.
Malott?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Mickagah?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept the preliminary plan for 10648 Call Drive with the conditions stated by the staff.
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the preliminary plan for 10648 Call Drive with conditions set by staff, where the clerk please call over.
Stikes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kaymar?
Yes.
Malott?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Mickagah?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is Consider Recommendation from the Planning Commission Regarding Replat and Preliminary and Final Plans for 2450, 2440, 2401 Midpoint Drive.
I will simplify this. Basically, what we're referring to here is the expansion of WMI, which formerly was known as the Legos Building. As you know, Legos originally built the building, they occupied a portion of the building. Later, they leased the building to WMI. Over time, that operation has grown to the point now they have occupied the entire building, and they want to expand the building. Buildings themselves are owned by a real estate investment trust, so you can see potential of their documents, because they are actually owners. So they own both buildings, being 2401 and 2440 technically, or they're giving addresses. And so they need to go through this replat, because there was an original plat of the property, to expand the property, allow WMI to build their lot. There is a detention basin there now, so they will have to build a detention basin. They're making improvements, other parts of the detention basins are on the other lots, so that in the end, they can have the two buildings, the one that serves Office Depot, the second one that will serve and expand in WMI. I will say that the intent of WMI will be that they will relocate some additional persons here and operations that have been departed building, and is approved. Again, this with, for the Painting Commission on the 19th, the public hearing, they have recommended approval of the final plat and also the preliminary final plan for this. Again, there are stipulations in the staff report of five, the final plat, and I believe three conditions on the final plan. We do have the applicant represented here tonight. If there are questions regarding engineering, the rest of the application, again, in the staff report on the second page, you'll see the conditions under replat, which are pretty much standard conditions. And then you see the preliminary final plan, they're voting on this currently on that item. The one thing that has been, discussions has been mainly how the access behind the existing 2401 building, there's a fairly large building, as you know, there's detention behind it already, and so we did want to make sure we were addressing that during the process. I think we have been able to address that to ensure that there's enough space between the building and the edge of the detention basin, that if necessary, we could get equipment behind that building. It is not paved, it's not a blue road, it was not part of the original plat or plan for that building.
All right, because there are two motions.
There is two motions, yes. For replat, and the second one for preliminary final plan.
For some reason, I have a hard time reading the drawing book. The replat, you got three, you got three lots there, right?
Yes.
Are we replating those, two lots, or what are we doing?
Effectively, yes. Correct me, two lots, yes. So we, so if you look where the detention basin is now, that's actually owned by the park, Midpoint Office Park, it's a common area, so that goes away. And that plus a portion of what is part of 2401 will be replatted for the 2440, 2450. So we're going to make a larger lot for them and a slightly smaller lot for 2401.
And then where, where is that retention being shifted to?
There is, let me find, and there's probably, if you look at under, under the GBA, you know, shuttle street, C1.0 is probably the best way to show that. There are basically two expansions. You see, at first, the existing retention pond, just immediately would be to the east of the existing 240, make sure, the 2440, 2450.
Back behind the, the Office Max?
When the Office Max, that's basically an expansion or new detention basin. It was on the very original plan back in 2001, but that will be a new detention area to carry the lot. So basically, what they've had to do, what they took out in detention, they're replacing it with these two areas. So they had to provide at least an equal, and I believe they did it, more than what was there before. So they're basically just ensuring that they're providing at least as much detention as was previously on the plan line. If you remember, Midpoint Office Park as a whole has a series of detention ponds, they're all connected, but it is not a system that's designed to discharge off property. So it collects in those various ponds, and then basically goes down into the earth, that would never totally, generally, it's never completely dry, and it fills up from storm events. If I recall right, they, they actually designed to have double the capacity in the under year storm. So they've always had excess capacity, but we still require basically that they replace capacity with length capacity.
Do you think they're planning on starting construction if everything goes well?
Do you know, with starting construction, I think they're looking to do grading plans.
We've got, yeah, we're in for a grading permit now, which should be released any day, and then at that point, just wait for WPT to coming loose.
I will say that we have some separate discussions related to WPT and related to potential IRBs or expansion of the building. So we're having two different things, and then don't want to try to conflate those two.
So this one, the word, the final plat stays, stands alone, and then the other two are together?
Yes. So the plat is one item, the preliminary final plan on the other. And you know, basically, the way Dave runs it is, the preliminary plat is the initial submission, we then gather the comments, they make modifications, and that becomes the final plan.
Mayor, make a motion that we accept the final plat, or replat, for 2450, 2440, 2401 Midpoint Drive with the conditions recommended by staff.
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the replat with conditions set by staff for 2450, 2440, 2401 Midpoint Drive, where the clerk please call over.
Stikes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kaymar?
Yes.
Malott?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Mickagah?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we accept the preliminary plan and the final plan with conditions as recommended by staff for 2450, 2440, 2401 Midpoint Drive.
There's also stipulations on that, too.
Yeah, those conditions, recommended by staff.
It has been moved in second to approve the preliminary and final plans for 2450, 2440, 2401 Midpoint Drive with stipulations stated by staff, where the clerk please call over.
Stikes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kaymar?
Yes.
Malott?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Mickagah?
Yes. Thank you, Mike.
Yes. I think we need a motion that Dave can no longer be absent in related meetings.
I don't know whether the council has authority to do that, but if you'd like.
I'm sure.
I can have a talk with him.
I think he's missed the last, missed one every one.
He was the last one. But he was one prior to that.
Yes.
I think he's trying to turn me into a plumber.
Okay, the next item will be, as our old business, Consider Requests from Waste Management Regarding Curbside Recycling, and you have a new layout here at your, at your place.
So Mayor, if I may, just a quick introduction, and, and, obviously, we have representative from Waste Management here. I know that you had some brief discussions at your last meeting, so I'll let John Blessing kind of give their requests to the council. What I did provide to you, because I think it's, it happened to come out as I was traveling to ICMA, so I was reading it on the airplane, this article that was put together by National Urban Cities about this very issue involving recycling and what, what should be done, what can't be done, kind of more information about the markets. I tried to provide to you a very rough overview of the whole article, we're going to do, it's address that further as we move on this evening. But I can probably ask first here from Mr. Blessing on the basis of their request, and I'll address this.
John, you've got the floor.
Thank you. So kind of a continuation of last month, I provided some information on the turbulence recycling industry and what's impacted us. And I can answer any further questions, although there were quite a few questions last week. I know that I worked with staff at the end of the last week and today on providing some additional information. Hopefully you have that impact as well. Just to remind the, the council that what we're looking for is in light of the change in the industry contamination standards, a increase in lieu of your contractual increase that is effective April of 2019, which per the contract is 1.5%, which equates roughly to about 22 cents. And the request that we're making is for $1.15. So that would include that 22 cents that's approved by the contract and really just amount to an additional 93 cents per month or 21 cents per week roughly in the breakdown. Kind of where we left off last week, I know that there was some requests for additional information. Sounds like staff has done the diligence in providing some of that. And really, at this point, if there's any additional questions or?
I'm not sure it all got into the pack. So, well, let me, and probably a good time I just do it. So I think the questions, and I'll summarize them here, John, and you can maybe address them. So maybe part of it, we asked them, what are the customers that they've approached about this that have franchised operations? I believe you said that there, I mean, you all, there have been four cities that have considered it in our area. I think you said Baser approved it through the mayor, I think it's correct. And Lewisburg approved some adjustment, I'm not sure if it was the full amount. And Mission Woods.
So, yeah, so the city of Baser and the city of Mission Woods approved, I believe that everyone has approved full amount thus far. Those did not go to council. The city of Baser, the city of Mission Woods, I met with city staff and the mayor, and they had enough in there, I guess they charged an amount over what we charged to the residents, and they were able to just absorb that without the residents feeling any impact whatsoever. The city of Lewisburg and the city of Cleveland, Missouri, and that's Lewisburg, Kansas, those were presented to council and they passed those as well. We were asked how many of our customers that were requesting this increase do, and the answer is 100% of all of our municipal and HOA customers, although I don't manage the HOA.
Can you explain the, so on the metrics of how you came up to this bottom line number of a $1.15 increase? If I read this correctly, I may be wrong. So it's really based on how much we recycle and what the loss of recycling is? Is that fairly correct?
Sure, sure. So there's a couple of, of factors in here. The, actually, there's three of them. The material stream value, which I believe last month I provided that, that graph that showed the red numbers of where, over a year ago, there were rebates for recycling because recycling didn't pay for itself. And today, there are charges for recycling for, for the processor. That's Waste Management. And then the other would be the processing cost, and that is a, a cost that is shouldered 100% by Waste Management. That is the cost of adding additional labor to, in essence, pick out all of the trash that's in the recycling. I think one of the questions staff presented was, you know, what, what advances in automation are, are able to be, to put in here to, to reduce this problem? And it's, it's the reverse. Automation has actually had to be slowed down because the machines can't pick out the trash. We actually have to hire manual labor. The local recycling center here, right off of Midland there, they added an entire third shift of labor. So they were running first and second shift, and now they're running all three shifts simply because we can't process the material fast enough due to the amount of time it takes to pull out the trash from the recycling. The, that's the residual cost, which is the smallest, so that's, that's processing cost, sorry. The residual cost is the smallest cost. That's ultimately what we pull out that we have to pay to dump in the landfill. It's the smallest portion of that. This is all based off of, to staff's point, this is all based off of the number of tons on average that's collected for Edwardsville. This is based solely on your information. Each municipality has a little bit different figure because each municipality recycles to a certain different volume of tonnage.
So if we recycle less, that cost goes down, but if we better recycle, is our cost still up?
So that was brought up last week, or last month. And, you know, recycling less doesn't occur to the volume. So that, that volume would go somewhere, presumably in the trash. And today, trash still costs more than recycling. So if you eliminated recycling, I suppose I would ask the question, then what happens to that, that volume of material? If it's going to go into the trash, then you've got increased trash volumes, which again is more expensive than, than the recycling service. So the idea here is not to eliminate recycling or reduce it, but to, to staff's point, to do it better. And quite honestly, we don't know how much, even the best efforts possible, I don't know how much of that can be accomplished at the residential level. Some of it just has to be accomplished at the processing plant.
Yes. So I think one of the bigger questions, how, when I said was, you know, again, now while, while we would agree that this issue with China has certainly changed the market as a market, according to information from National Region Cities, which I would just note, the sourcing came partially from Waste Management, which says that, you know, only about a third of all the recyclable market leaves the U.S. Two thirds stays here. And as, and then of that, about half of it goes to China. So China has certainly reduced from their, their formal goal of one and a half to 10%. It certainly, I think the market has been sending trashier recyclables than maybe what their limits were. But it is a portion of the market. It's not as if we're sending all of our, certainly mixed paper plastics is a portion of the market where this has changed. Obviously, plastics represent from a tonnage standpoint, a limited amount of tonnage. So I think part of the question is, is this a temporary change or permanent change? It wasn't happening.
I think what, what really concerns me, and I expressed this to some of the other council members, is that what's going to happen should you just continue this service because of the cost? In other words, the users can no longer afford to pay for that loss and all, and you're going to say to us, oh, we're going to discontinue the, the program? I think that's my biggest concern. And there's, and that's still a well guess.
Yeah, we have, we would like, we would probably not initiate the cancellation of a recycling program unless that was the last option possible. Now, we've had a couple of municipalities that, as the question was just posed, say, well, what if we just got rid of our recycling program? Does that solve our problem? And no, it doesn't because, as we've kind of discussed, you still have the tonnage of that material that's gathered somewhere. I think one of the examples in our discussions with staff was the city of Savannah, Missouri, who they chose to reduce their recycling collection to every other week. The cost stayed the same. There was no reduction in that. So that was kind of their way of allowing us our increase because we collected it less frequent, but the price stayed the same. Now, you know, that doesn't necessarily reduce the amount of contamination by a percentage, but it does reduce the amount that comes into our processing facility because we're collecting less of it. So there are some, you know, creative ways. They did not want to get rid of the program completely, but that was one way that they looked at solving this problem. And it's had a real good effect because from what I understand, the residents of the city are happy with the reduced collection. And that has caused them to kind of grassroots educate their citizens. So we're hoping to see that improve and then maybe even return to a weekly collection. Some cities are creative in, in solving that problem.
And I don't think I was proposing to eliminate that. I think my point was is that, so a city that does a good job of recycling is somewhat being penalized more than a city that doesn't recycle as much because I'm burying more cost by having more volume. And when we put recycling in, we have to pay an additional, if I'm not mistaken, around $2 per unit increase. So now we're going to roughly, I think, more than $3.15. So assuming we did do away with recycling, there, our price should get down because you were collecting the same waste stream at $2, $2 a month cheaper.
Sure. I certainly don't see that happening unless there, I mean, the, the trash volume would either equate to an increase in charge in overage stickers, legal dumping. I mean, I don't know where that volume would go. But I see your point. And recycling more doesn't necessarily mean recycling right. So I think that's, that's some of the problem too is the, the old motto used to be quantity over quality when recycling first started. Just throw it all in there and we'll, we'll get it, we'll get it going. That, that motto has changed. We would rather have less but more quality recyclables rather than the quantity of recycling, only to find out that a large portion of it is contaminated.
Can you communicate that to the citizen?
Well, it starts here. You know, we, we, one of the questions that staff and I were discussing was, you know, how do we roll out educational programs? And I know that we're involved right now with the UG in looking at rolling out countywide educational program that would include Edwardsville. But unfortunately, a lot of that education comes with an increase in cost. When you tell somebody that their cost is going up, people seem to pay a little more attention to that. But there are multiple programs of recycling education that we're happy to engage in. Obviously, cost is something that has to be considered. You know, one of my cities said, well, let's just send everybody a mailer every week. And I'm like, well, who's paying for that? Right? I mean, so, but, you know, jointly, regardless of whatever is decided, you know, we're happy to still engage in some recycling education with the council and the residents.
So what's the Wyandotte County education program look like?
Um, that's, I'm not in charge of it. That's being handled by Kurt Suthar. And he, I met with him on the 3rd of October, which was last Wednesday, and he just asked if he could book space at our office. And he was going to invite staff from Edwardsville, the UG, our KCK, and Bonner Springs, and really start from scratch and look at what that program should be. Should, I, I heard a mix of open houses where we could go to community centers around Wyandotte County and have an open house where residents could come in and ask questions. And we could even provide materials from our, our facility that show contamination and, you know, people can see it and things like that. Of course, there's always flyers that we insert, you know, in bills and things of that nature, but sometimes those just get thrown away and not ready.
What's being contaminated, when you say contamination, mixed paper?
Um, wow, there's a lot of things. So since it's all single stream collected, as simply as throwing your water bottle into your, your recycling container and it has this much water in it, that water's going to come out, it's going to degrade the paper. People still put glass, unfortunately, in their recycling. Now, that gets broken and gets embedded into the plastics and the cardboard. The biggest contamination is simply just bags of trash. People will use their recycling container as an additional trash container when they don't want to pay for an overage sticker. There is some innocent contamination. I say innocent, meaning uneducated, where the pizza box is my best example, where people will throw pizza box in the recycling container because they think it's cardboard. And although most of it is, if the top of it's covered in grease and cheese, suddenly now that's, that's, that cardboard's unusable. So there's a kind of a mix of what contamination really is. But to its soul is unclean recycling and trash. Those are the two big.
You mentioned last time, like peanut butter jars with peanut butter in it and mayonnaise jars with mayonnaise in it. So really what you're asking the citizen to do is completely clean out the container, or you know, the Coke bottle, pour out, rinse out. That's what you're asking them to do, which still doesn't reduce the, the cost. Our cost, our citizens' cost.
Correct, correct. Now, if we can get to contamination-free recycling, I don't know if that ever possible, but that would certainly change the industry as China being, you know, the, the moving force in the recycling industry, they lowered the contamination level to a half percent. Everyone will, foreign and domestic, follow suit. So they, they kind of followed their, their lead. China is also banning certain plastics. I think, if you remember, it's supposed to be like plastics one through seven on that little triangle that you see on your plastic. They don't want anything from five up. So it's like one through four. Now, we're hoping that the rest of the market doesn't follow suit, or you're right, will, will come and say, these things can no longer be recycled because nobody wants them. So it, it's a tumultuous situation, to say the least. We don't know where it's going to go. What we said, like I presented last month, we've seen dips. We've seen it go down for three months at a time, but it always comes back. And this is going on over a year at this point, according to that graph that I presented last month. And we don't see it coming back. I don't have a crystal ball. We talked a little bit about the state of our governments. Is this political posturing by, by those entities? I don't know. In four or five years, could this completely collapse? And next thing you know, we're coming back saying, hey, recycling's free? I don't know.
I think if it's been going on over a year, it wouldn't necessarily reflect who's in office right now, since it hasn't been a year. It just seems to me raising the rate 10% seems really extreme when our contracts run at 10%. I've had several citizens ask me in, in years past, as Waste Management has sold our recycling and made a lot of money, in that time, were they ever like, oh, you're making too much money, let's lower the rate? And, and I'd asked, and we've never had a rate decrease. And I feel like that's kind of the purpose of having a contract is so our citizens can know what to expect. And I personally feel like I might be doing them a disservice. And just raising the rate really would no benefit to them at this point, when hopefully things will settle, you know, before our contract actually changes. Can you, can you explain a little bit as far as why another solution might not be better? Maybe reduce a lot of recycling or take the year or something like that?
So recycling has never paid for itself. There was never a time where any recycler was swimming in profits over recycling. If you look traditionally trash cost, making figures up, you have $10 or $12, and then recycling costs $2 or $3, and that's how you get to your $14, $15 a month for, for recycling. So if you look at the service, they're identical. You have a driver, you have a truck, drives around, empty the carts. So why is one three times the amount of the other? And that's because it subsidized the service cost with the material rebate that we would get by selling the material. If we can sell the trash and make money on it, we will hit it. So you could sell the recycling, recruit some of that money, and then that's why the cost to the resident is, you know, $2 or $3 opposed to the ten and twelve for trash. Once that self subsidy vanishes, which it has, and it's been gone for about a year, suddenly now that, that cost doesn't reflect, the revenue we're receiving from those $2 or $3 doesn't reflect the cost. And that's why I'm here today. As far as, you know, doing a disservice to the resident, I certainly get your point. I certainly understand. The only thing we're cautioning is an incremental increase, adjusting on the fly with the market is our recommendation opposed to looking at a contract, be it with Waste Management or with any other hauler that is $5 more than what you're paying today. So the time would come, I think it's 2021, when this contract is over, should this go out to bid and should every hauler bid on it? Obviously, there's competition. That's, that's fantastic. But then that resident sees that increase, kind of sticker shock increase at that point. So it, it is a little bit of a gamble, right? I mean, maybe in that period of time, things will change. Based on historical view over the last year, I wouldn't count on it. But, but that is, yeah, that is the gamble, is do you take a small incremental increase now? Or do you possibly get a larger increase that causes more questions in near future?
Messaging becomes pretty tough because for decades, it's saved the planet. Recycle saved the planet. And now we're talking about recycle, but pay more because it's costing us a bunch. And so the message is very difficult for us to convey to a citizen that, you know, it's no longer. it's no longer about save the planet, it's about save the waste management.
Well, no, it is, it is still save the planet, it's simply save the process that is saving the planet. And if you were to put it into perspective, and you tell someone that, you know, would they be willing to pay 21 cents more a week, or 93 cents over their regular increase a month to help improve the program, I think most people would understand that. We had the same thing when Waste Management acquired Deffin Law, there was some increase in our regular trash rates, and residents said, well, we noticed, you know, is it the big company that came in and bought you, is that why some of the rates went up? And we said, no, it's because currently our fleet is all compressed natural gas, and that costs a little bit more than the regular diesels that we use. So if you explain why the increase is there, okay, you know, that makes sense, it wasn't just, you know, we wanted to raise rates to, you know, continue the program. So you're not wrong, messaging is difficult, but I think framed properly, it's, it can be accepted. Again, it just kind of depends on what is the state of recycling in Edwardsville.
So the 93 cents would buy what? What does it buy our system?
It sustains the program, I guess, is the answer to that. So if the increase is denied, obviously we would, we wouldn't full recycling tomorrow, but the long-term viability and sustainability of the recycling program would be in question.
How does location, so in your planning, right, so you don't have a city any closer to location to your planning, so, you know, a good portion of cost is, as you said, right, you got a truck to manage, and a route, so the farther I have to go to bring materials to a collection site, in theory, it should cost me more, right?
Uh, yeah, and that's normally built into the original rate.
Because I think some of your other increases did significantly less.
I have had both, above and below, what we're requesting from Edwardsville, so honestly, distance and the transportation, I don't think was factored in, into the calculations that I saw, but again, that's kind of baked into the original rate that we came up with, you know, when the contract was.
I think it would be really helpful to see that with different rates, we should start to check, didn't mean that, but just, I saw that exactly to ask for someone to ask to compare with what other rates are out there, and that's confidential, apparently. It's just really, like, this would be really hard for, I have to speak for myself, it'd be really hard for me to give a yes to.
So I look at this sheet that was passed out to this board, and when did we sign the contract?
February 2016.
2016, I think it's a five-year contract. All right, so I look at this sheet about trash pickup on I-435, which I've asked about a bunch of times, and I see on the date of February the 1st, 2018, kind of interesting that all these started increasing as we got close to a rate increase, but there was, 12 people worked for 75 hours, that's 12 people for two straight weeks, and they worked on the northbound shoulder from K-32 to Woodin. And then I look at February 2nd, February 16th, those three dates right there, just in the month of February, shows 178 man-hours. 12 people on one day, five on another, nine on another, and all we got cleaned up was Woodin and K-32. I don't remember asking that trash only get picked up at Woodin, I asked about the city limit, which is all the way up to I-70. From what I can look back and tell on here, that there was not one single date that anybody got up towards I-70 for that many trash. We signed a contract, and I don't want to change the contract, that's what we signed, and we'll renegotiate it when that time comes. I'm sure that you guys had a competent person negotiate that contract, or should have been a competent person to negotiate that original contract, and because there's been some changes, that's what the contract's for. If diesel prices go down or fluctuate, that's all built into your contract. I'm not at all in favor of a rate increase at this time. And I still like to see trash picked up, like we were originally promised when we signed the contract two years ago. I've had two council members express non-support, but I would prefer that be done in the form of a motion rather than just comment. I make a motion that we, well, it just says to old business, consider requests, so I make a motion to deny the request set forth by Waste Management regarding curbside recycling charges.
Second.
Thank you, are there any other questions before we move on? Okay, if not, the motion has been made and seconded to deny the request to make Waste Management for curbside recycling charges. Would the court please follow?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I think something, John, we need to really focus on though, because I think we need to focus on the education part, because if you reduce the amount of material going in, the result should be that your revenue streams can go up.
True.
So I think that's what we need to spend our first focus on, we need to educate people, we need to do it here, because I don't think there's been much education in that still, on what to make that process better.
I think what might also go a long way is whenever you're told something, when you're trying to get a contract, and then it doesn't happen, and then when you're asked about it a year later, and we're told, well, I don't ever remember that being said, doesn't really sit well with me at all. So that is where I'm starting.
We'll continue to, I didn't want to, I want to tell you one thing on the education part, when I had the trash barrels put in my driveway, the recycle barrel and the big green barrel, the only education I got was decals on top of it that said, this is acceptable, this isn't. It didn't say anything about washing out the peanut butter jar, it didn't say anything about all these triangles and all the different types of plastic that the article that you sent us the other day commented on, the public does not know this. And I'm, I agree with all of us up here, that I don't think we need to be charged more because we haven't been educated. Ma'am, I'll talk to you after the meeting, if you don't mind.
Well, I was just going to say what you said, if that's okay.
No, that's fine.
Well, and even since the last meeting, I've been paying more attention in what I'm putting in recycling, so I think that just goes a long way, and honestly, social media, we don't have to spend money to educate people anymore, and so I think that would be a great way to start, and I'm willing to try.
Well, that's exactly, and I agree with you, because I've done that since the last time you were here, I thought, okay, well, this is, you said garden hose, there's nothing that says garden hose didn't go in there, it's piece of rubber that are recycled, they make tires from tracks out of it, so, I mean, you know, we haven't been educated on that. And the other comment is, your service out there is very erratic, and, you know, trash barrels are in the middle of the highway on 110th Street, and they blow across the road, and the lids are left open, they don't empty them all the way out, I mean, there's a lot of things that we can discuss here besides charging us more for. But I think our focus tonight was the recycling. That's all right, I apologize. I didn't mean to reiterate just that, I think it's important that we can see that we're not facial. And it's not that we're not thinking about it, we're trying to figure out a way to handle the situation.
Well, if you work with Waste Management and the UG, and that's always me, that's what we're working on. Thank you, John. Okay, advisory course.
I don't know that I have too much, I will just say we have a lot of various development pieces coming in processes, I would note that on our meeting on the 22nd is the date that we plan to do the bond issuance, so to speak, or approve issuance of bonds, the formal process, a TGT and CID, that particular night, and then on the November, first meeting in November, which I believe is the 13th, because it's holiday on the 12th, we will have a couple of IRB items back with the city council, so those things are happening, like I say, there's a number of pieces going on out there related to just broad development to keep working on.
When did you say bonds should go market?
Well, the 22nd is the date that we approve, there's a number of documents we, the city council, approve on October 22nd, that's like the preliminary offering statement, the person, they will then, shortly after that, they have to submit stuff to the general's office, they will market those around the middle part of November, and the anticipated closing day right now is December 4th. So that's just, from our standpoint, the action is basically that, October 22nd, we may have an executive session around that, and just an update on the development agreement that's tied with that, just so you know.
Can you tell me again what the number is, the bond number that's going to go to market with the amount?
What the, roughly, everything together, the par amount is around 23 million. And these are relatively, I put it's about 10 million for the TGT and for the TIP, and then two to three million on the CID, the CID is a much larger size, and they actually are breaking that into like taxable and tax exempt, so just marketing gathers up, technically, it's almost like a war issue sort of, for scandal. I would just tell you, for my time, we have a weekly call at this point of all the parties, keep everything going, there's a lot of moving pieces, so.
And no type of permit prior to December 4th, grading permit, just probably grading is.
They could get graded, they could get graded, they will actually have to have a building permit prior to the close, as part of their requirements and our requirements, part of the bond and the financing requirements, they have to have a number of things, and one of that is building, a final building permit.